So you were a suspect then, huh, in a high-speed truck incident?
M- oh.
What?
He wants to talk to you.
Rose?
Yeah.
Are you ready for the board? Okay. Evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to call to order our regular August 25th City Council meeting for the Beulah City Council, time being 6:00 PM. We would like to have the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll please rise. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Linda, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Connolly?
Here.
Councilmember Elevitz?
Here.
Councilmember Sierra?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bowman?
Here.
And Mayor Drusick?
Here. Thank you. At this time, we would do a reordering of the agenda. I have not had any requests. Do we have any requests to reorder the agenda? Seeing none, we'll proceed. The, um, make sure he's okay. He's okay? Okay. At this time, we'll have our public comments. These are, speaker slips need to be returned in. It's a three-minute presentation time. Typically, items not on the agenda. However, if there's anything on the agenda you wish to speak to, you may do it at this time also. I do not have any speaker slips for public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment session and move to consent calendar. We have four items. Does, do we have any comments on the floor? Or do we just have two?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the minutes of August 11, 2016, regular city council meeting, list of claims to be approved or ratified for payment to date for fiscal year 2016-17, our revenue and expenditure reports through July 31, 2016, and acceptance of the Reservoir 1 and 2 improvement project.
I'll second the motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. I just had a comment. I wanted to, I don't know if the minute should affect, it didn't say specifically that Reservoir 1 was accepted. It said accept Reservoir 2 in item 4. I had highlighted, just wanted to make sure we have for future issues. It talks about the Reservoir 2 was completed, gives a completion date, and it says to accept 1 and 2, but it doesn't say that 1 was ever completed. And I'm assuming it is since it's, I think that would be the only.
Yes, they were both.
Okay.
And where's?
I highlighted it, and I, since I don't have bookmark on this one, I can't go exactly right to it, but it's, if everyone else is happy with it, we'll proceed with the motion and the second. Okay, Linda, call the roll for items 1 through 4.
Councilmember Sierra?
Aye.
Councilmember Elevitz?
Aye.
Councilmember Connolly?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bowman?
Aye.
And Mayor Drusick?
Aye.
We do not have any presentations tonight. Ordinance, we have a public hearings, open public hearing for the agenda item 5. Mr. Bzinski?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Again, this ordinance clarifies the time limits for various applications, including zoning clearances, use permits, and development plans. The Planning Commission recommended 4O to adopt these changes, and the city council has provided a memo clarifying the extension process, and he will give a brief explanation of his memo based on council's direction at the last meeting.
I voted against that.
Okay.
If you can correct that. Oh, the Planning Commission?
Planning Commission.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on Mr. Bzinski's comments, the objective of the ordinance was to address certain issues that we saw with regard to time limits for minor use permits, CUPs, final development plans. I thought one of the interesting anomalies here was that, under the existing language, which had been in effect for some time, extension requests could be made administratively by the city manager or planning director without a public hearing. And I thought, based on issues that had risen with regard to certain project, that it might, it would be an improvement and would provide clear guidelines if we made it clear that that decision to grant an extension, should an extension be warranted, should be made by the Planning Commission following a notice public hearing. And this would take away the ability of the city manager or planning director in the future to make an administrative decision to extend a land use approval without notice to the public. I thought that it would be good public policy to have that decision be made in a public meeting after notice has been provided to the public and give the public a chance to address issues that may be relevant to an extension. There was another issue that I saw was, and that was that the, with regard to minor use permits and CUPs, there was no cap on the time extensions that could be granted, that could be granted administratively theoretically with, for any period of time. And so what this new ordinance does is it does put a cap on the amount of those time extensions and on the time limits for which a minor use permit or CUP will still be valid without any movement toward commencing the use. As I point out in the memo, these will always have to be addressed on a case-by-case basis, and that's because the case law makes it hard in some situations to draw really clear, bright lines. But what I thought this ordinance did is it clarified, it provided clear, bright lines than what we previously had with regard to the time limits for minor use permits and CUPs, the process by which those extension requests would be processed, in this case, would be processed by the Planning Commission following notice to the public, and then it would be a guideline, a clear guideline as to the length of an extension for a minor use permit or CUP. The ordinance carries forward some of the existing language, but the goal here was to address what I saw and what Mr. Bzinski saw as certain anomalies that could, in the future, pose a problem should this issue come up. So that was the intent and the objective of this ordinance.
Any questions from council regarding the item?
I've got comments, no questions.
Okay. I do not have any speaker slips for this, so we will.
So the public hearing is already open?
It was continued from the last meeting.
Right. I have no speaker slips, so we would close public hearing. This will be an introduction and first reading, however, and before that, we would have council comments. Did you want to comment?
Well, my comments really haven't changed since the last meeting. Originally, our city attorney had told us he was going to give us a clarification of the ordinance, and I really don't feel that the ordinance needed to be rewritten to clarify it. I thought we were going to get a letter stating what the clarification was. I think it's very specific as to time extensions and what's allowed and what's not allowed. I also didn't ask the city manager to revise any of this, and so I just don't agree that it needed to be rewritten or revised.
Thank you. You have other comments? With that, we entertain a motion for approval at first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1603, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Beulah, California, revising Title 19 zoning, the Beulah Municipal Code, relating to sections 19.08.100.E, zoning clearance time limits, 1908.110E use of permit time limits, and 1908.120H development plan time limits.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second?
Vice Mayor Bowman?
Aye.
Councilmember Elevitz?
Aye.
Councilmember Connolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Sierra?
No.
And Mayor Drusick?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. The, next to council member comments. Do we want to, John, start the cheering?
Well, I've got a couple, but I'm sure yours is somewhat similar to mine, too.
I got a couple. You go right ahead. I was sitting right next to you.
So let me, we had a ribbon cutting at Brothers Spirits a couple Fridays ago.
Missed that?
And it was, it's just a really cool place, and everybody should go there and check it out. It's two brothers who have put together a really fun experience for people. So that was one comment, and the other one was to congratulate Linda Reed on becoming a published author, and the article in the paper was very nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The, my comments go along the quarterly meeting, the Channel Cities League, I think just Division 13 of the California League of Cities meets quarterly. This last one was held last Friday in Lompoc, and we had three council members attend. This is Sierra. Mr. Connolly and myself with our spouses. It was a good event, and we were pleased to represent, of the 25 cities, only 16 were there, but they, I think it was summertime, so they put it off to that. The, my other comment is to call attention to an upcoming election in November, and I see that the library is well-staffed at the table just outside the door. Voter registration, so everyone can make sure that they're, if they would like to partake in the election, whatever city you're in, you need to be registered to vote for that, for that county. So, wanted to make sure, because oftentimes, I know they come running in the post office wanting to.
We've got them there, too.
Okay. Next is council items. We have any, any council items you'd like to see on the agenda? Okay. Written communications? We have none? Moving right along. Committee reports.
I had, I had, I've got one report. I was at APCD today, and we adopted a resolution to certify the final environmental impact report that our APCD staff has been working on for over two years now, and they, it passed unanimously. They worked really hard to make sure everybody was taken care of. One of the questions was from a wine group that's very similar to our Terrebonne. If you have a high gas emissions, you get fined, and they were concerned that during winemaking season, there's a lot of gases that are released and that they would be penalized, but they took that into consideration and they spread it out throughout the year so that Terrebonne should be able to produce wine without any penalties. So that was, that was it.
Thank you. I do not have, you, no library? I did not, we have not had a meeting of any of my committees since the last time we met. With that, we will move to business items. We have possible action on items 6 and 7. Mrs. Hess, item 6.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Item 6 is a continued item from last meeting, August, earlier in August, and it's for the engineering services proposals review. Just to summarize, the city received four proposals from MNS engineers, Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Tetra Tech, and Flowers and Associates. An outside panel reviewed the proposals and made the recommendations as proposed in your staff report. We have invited the firms again to be here this evening, and I believe all firms are represented in case there's additional questions or clarifications that the council may have. With that, the floor is open for council's discussion and review of the contract.
Okay.
If you would enter somebody the letter that we received, if you wouldn't mind?
Certainly. I, Gavin Moore sent the council and city manager a letter. I don't know if you want me to read it into the minutes or just the?
I would suggest reading it so the benefit of the consultants and the public can hear what is in.
Gavin Moore is one of our developers. He's doing the townhomes in town. He says, "Dear city council members, this past week I spoke with Mr. Salvito of MNS regarding the growth Beulah has experienced over the past few years and the issues developers experienced in obtaining plan and project approval through two inspections. Mr. Salvito concurred that the increase in project applications and approvals created challenges which he recognizes needs, needed to be addressed. Mr. Salvito conveyed that the implementation of improved processes, streamlined reviews, and improved communications took place earlier this year. We discussed the need for greater transparency as to the role MNS undertakes for the city, all of which could help the city and the consulting engineer hired by the city. Regardless of your final selection of the company for the engineering services to the city, it seems to me that these items will not be resolved tonight. As such, I am writing to suggest that the city continue this matter to give the council time to discuss the recommendations by MNS to improve the services to the city, its residents, and for businesses investing in Beulah. Sincerely, Gavin Moores."
Thank you. Would it be appropriate to discuss the meeting we had today with Carolyn concerning the billing and how things are done?
Yes.
So I think that would give cause to the, for concern, just because council members are here that were not aware that we would be having that, trying to understand the billing, not only the billing process, but where we had some question from public comments at our last meeting regarding how the billing proceeds, and I think we're, that is currently in progress. We have gotten some, I don't know if you'd like to add anything to that?
Well, actually, yes. At our last meeting, I had said that I needed, I really wanted to see the billing, a breakdown of the services, who inspect, who was doing the inspections, what charges were being made, and exactly what the inspections were for. So I made an appointment with the city manager and Carolyn, our finance director, to go in and sit down and go over that. Ed, our mayor, asked if he could join, and we got there, and they did not have the data. They were able to come up with May's statements for three of the businesses that I requested, and they promised me that they could get me two years' worth. It's just kind of frustrating because I really think I've been clear about what I've been asking for, for quite a while, and I just, I don't know how I'm not getting my message across, and I'm very frustrated. I've been told by developers that they don't feel that some of the charges are correct. MNS says that the charges are correct. I wanted to look at the charges and compare them, and I've been unable to do that. So at this point, I, although I know MNS does a great service to the city of Beulah, I really don't want them working with our developers anymore. I think maybe the solution would be to have MNS continue a contract with the city to do the city's work. They've got all the data, they've been doing it for years, and then perhaps to hire another engineer service to take care of our developers. That's my thought.
Okay. Well, and I think what that leads me to feel that we need, I've looked at all of the proposals, I've talked to a couple of people about it, just, I really, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about perhaps taking a matrix that the council, since this is a public event, a matrix of where we are, because some, there was a, there was a recommendation, which I found, and it's not a derogatory statement, there was a committee that collectively came up with a recommendation that perhaps if someone doesn't charge as much by hour, they're probably going to cost more in the long run, and I find that to be an unprofessional or a, a bit of arrogance, if you will, where you just say, a contract is a contract, and if you state your hours, it's very hard to say unless you want to get into time and material, then we're going to have to do those sort of.
And if I could clarify, I think what they meant is you, there's a possibility on the billing rates that somebody who has lower billing rates may do higher. You don't know, and that's why they didn't do it. Not that it would occur, but that there was, the billing rates are relative, and they may or may not bill more or not bill more, but that's something we would have to take into account when we did the contract, but it wasn't stating that as a fact.
No, I realize it, but it was, it was a clear, and then we've since received a communication by one of the firms that we all did receive, just commenting about that, that could be a possibility, many things could be a possibility, the size of the fleet of the organization costs more, and we were given a billing rate. I'm not sure how it felt, it just seemed a lopsided observation to me for a level playing field to be made.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could I, I do respect the panel that went over the proposals, and I do respect the fact that MNS has a lot of experience with the city. I do appreciate that MNS has hired somebody to come in and put together plan checks and a system where it's controlled a little bit better, and because I respect the panel, I've spoken to two of the panel, I wasn't able to get ahold of Carpinteria, but I spoke to Jim Kemp, and we had Patrick here. That's why I think it would be smart for the city to keep MNS on, on the city side for perhaps a two-year contract with one-year extensions. Carolyn, you also mentioned at our meeting that there's a state law now that says that we have to go to RFP every five years. When did, when did that law come into effect?
What it is, is the state comptroller, they were here for two weeks, their auditors. They come every now and then to audit your, for gas tax and how the spending is done, and they, they pulled the MNS contract, and they saw that it was from '92, and they, so that was when the auditor expressed to me and also put it in writing that we are required to go out for RFP every five years. So that's from the state comptroller's office of California.
Do you know when that became a law?
I don't, I don't, because I don't, I can get the actual code, though, and find out when, you know, how long it's been.
But we're doing it now, and we'll do it again in five years.
Yeah, we let them know that we went out.
Any other comments? We have a request, I guess, to, oh, continue this for maybe better understanding of it. I know I would like to, I received the email from Carolyn this afternoon, so I haven't had a chance to formulate the.
And we'd like to get that information to all the council members as well, which we haven't at this point.
So that being said, I mean, if it's.
That being said, I mean, Holly did, I mean, you brought up some very important points I thought noteworthy. Are you satisfied with moving forward on, as Mark was saying in proceeding later, or do you see something here that might, you must need to act on something at this juncture?
You know, I, my mind is pretty well set, but if the council needs more time to digest it, I don't have a problem. I think this thing is getting dragged out a lot longer than it necessarily needs to be.
Sure, and I agree, I mean, I would love to act on it now as well. The one thing that, yeah, as you know, is there's hesitancy within the group, and there's lack of information that's still floating. At this juncture, I think that everybody would feel a little bit better if that information was able to come to fruition over the next few days. I'm getting information every three days, new information, so it just seems that perhaps this is not the night to make a formal decision on that from what's being said.
I don't have a problem with that either. I do have a couple of comments, though, to sort of counter Councilwoman Sierra's comments, and that is that some of the issues that she brought up, I don't believe really fall so much on MNS as they do on, actually, the staff in the city and the oversight of the, of anybody that's in that position. And so I'm not, I don't completely agree with the fact that MNS shouldn't be involved with developers. I actually talked to a couple of developers who've developed projects in the past who were quite satisfied, with a few little caveats, which I think everybody knows could happen with any engineering firm, that there's always room for improvement in terms of streamlining plan checks, and nobody ever gets a plan check done fast enough. That, I think, is put out there. But I think even MNS recognizes that there's room for improvement, and they're making some of those, but I think that their experience in this community is invaluable, and I don't think we should short sight that. But I agree that if there's more information that could bear on this, I don't see the harm in extending it.
I think I was the one who had pushed originally, two weeks ago, that we sell it tonight, mostly because we have some dates in the future that not everybody can make it. I think somebody was going to be gone at the next council.
I'm gone the next meeting.
Right, and there was something, I think, meeting after that, I'm not sure.
Is anyone aware of the second meeting in September? That was going to bring up, I think you're going to be gone.
I'll be back the second meeting, but it's pretty heavy scheduling.
Yeah, I haven't heard anybody else who's going to be gone that, that meeting.
Well, so we don't continue this to a time where we don't have a full council?
Correct.
I would appreciate a consensus, if we will, or do we have to have a motion, or we have?
I think there should be a motion.
Leo, did you have a comment?
I'd just like maybe staff to come back with your clarification of, or your perception of what's lacking up to this point, because I'm ready to go ahead and recommend how to proceed with the contract, but I'd like to hear from staff, because there seems to be a consensus that there's still information that needs to come forward, so if you could illuminate that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, and it's basically financial information to show billings from MNS, and that's what we've, are going to provide to the entire council when we get that together.
And that's from the meeting that?
Yes.
I'm certainly not prepared to move forward with MNS from, I've heard too much on both sides, I really have, and I'm really definitely on the fence from what I'm listening, some of the thoughts I'm listening, I've heard some very good things about what's been happening, and other things are quite alarming, so I do think this, it could be more lucid in the next few days. I've tried the last few days to find out as much information as I can, but stuff like this more.
I have a question that's sort of related. I mean, we're obviously, we're, our objective here is to choose one of the candidates from the RFP that we sent out, but when we bring out the contract, is it going to be tied into this, elements of, you know, metrics to, and oversight? Elements of, you know, metrics and oversight, verification?
Yes, whatever firm you pick, we need a new contract, or firms, if we go multiple. The contract is going to be performance-based, it's going to be detailed, and we'll have measures to look at, which our contract does not have at this point. So, whoever firms or whatever we do, the contracts will be more specific, and the council will obviously be able to look at those contracts, and if we're not detailed enough, they will be able to give us comments.
Is it possible to get some of that or all of that by the time we come back to make a decision on who it's going to be?
You mean like a template of what a...
Well, some of the...
Yes. If we're doing it for the second meeting in September, I think Rose and I can work at some bullet points of what we think should be in the contract as far as performance measures.
I think that's every bit as valid as who we choose.
Yes, so, yeah, we can do that.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
There was one other comment, just something to think about. I did ask Mr. Byrdzinski about the option of two firms, which Mr. Kemp also didn't think was a bad idea, and Mark did say that if we hired another firm to take care of our developers, that it would be interesting if we went with the two-year contract to see exactly how their plan check and inspections compared to the ones that MNS did. Then we'd have a pretty good clue as to whether or not we had a problem or not.
And you know, in the past, we've had matrices where we've had discussion about an agreement, whether, you know, whether we're in a one-year, a two-year, a three-year, and staff is able to provide that for us. One of the things, I won't ask staff, I think we're gathering the time, I'll try to make a spreadsheet so that we can compare the options, because I think, just looking at what Carolyn sent, a six-page document, reading it very quickly, I think if we come up with the weighted average of what, how much time is being spent on different things. And I did come into City Hall and review the Marburg contract, for example, and I think, you know, if I were going to say the types of contracts, except for our sheriffs that come, and I think we have, they probably have the biggest contract, but we... Marburg contract is pretty inclusive, it's very large and directs, so we can find out where we're going, and, you know, we're going from an eight-page document to something else. And I appreciate the concern by the council and the willingness of the applicants to be patient, because we are a small city. MNS came when we were a zero date line, and we're approaching 25 years, and I think we want to have our best possible attitudes together and all be on the same page. So I think this would bring us to a September...
Twenty-second.
September 22nd.
It's going to be a big meeting.
That...
Yep.
The Pitchfork people will be here with...
Water rates.
Okay.
I have a couple of comments.
Yes, surely, no, I just...
I think it's very important to be able to measure the performance over the next two years, again, with whoever we choose. But I think even if MNS were to get that job, the next two years would reflect a positive change to the prior two years, no matter who gets it, because, number one, we're paying more attention to it, and number two, we'll have actually guidelines that'll specify and measure those. So I think that's kind of unfair to say that if we put somebody else in there and they perform better than what happened the last two years, that that's going to mean something. I don't think it will.
The past is gone, and the future is here.
It sounds to me, at this point, that regardless of the billing statements that will come back, provided through MNS, that it sounds like there's a tendency for the council to look at putting a new contractor into the plan check process with, obviously, new performance and oversight from the city. I'm not sure when the billing, the information comes back, if that's going to change the minds at council. Although, Mr. Baumann, Councilman Baumann, you, as you stated, it would be an improvement either way, which I think is a cogent statement, because one way or another, we're going to get a better amount of service, either from a new contractor or from the current contractor. I guess my question is, to the rest of the council and the staff, is the billing that you sought today, is that going to change your mind regarding MNS? If it's not, then maybe we should go ahead and make that decision today, if you think it is.
I think it's relevant to hear before we make that decision in general.
Okay.
If there's problems, once we actually see the bills, if there's actual problems with it, I think that's very relevant.
That's a fair statement, all right.
With that, would anyone entertain a motion to continue this item to September 22nd?
I would make a motion to continue this item to September 22nd.
Thank you, mister. Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Baumann.
Aye.
Councilmember Connolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Elevitz.
Aye.
Councilmember Sierra.
Aye.
And Mayor Drewsick.
Aye. And I want to express our appreciation for the four applicants coming twice to the meeting, and we will have a third meeting, but it won't be the next meeting. So, I apologize for your having to come out for another uneventful meeting for the firms, but I think you're seeing the town coming together for engineering services and wanting to make sure that we understand more in the future. So I think we'll be working on that. And with that, we imagine we've got Agenda Item 7, we could go to that, and we'll take a break.
All right, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a discussion and direction regarding recreational vehicle parking that was brought up a few meetings ago, and council directed us to bring it forward so the council can have a discussion. I've given you the public nuisance sections regarding the parking of these types of vehicles, and the issue at hand is allowing them, one vehicle such as that, to be parked in the front and street side yard setback areas. And when this was adopted back in 2008, it was on a 3-2 vote. The primary reason for the three votes was to provide homeowners an off-street location for recreational vehicle storage due to a lack of suitable storage yards in the area. The two dissenting votes felt that storing unscreened recreation vehicles and trailers in full view of the street would negatively affect the aesthetics of the city. So those were the two issues, and on 3-2 vote, we put that in place. So, I did a quick windshield survey yesterday, and there are 67 properties that have storage of a trailer, boat, or RV in the front yard area or the street side yard. The majority following the existing code section, so they're not in violation of the code, they have the appropriate setback, they're on the paved surface, et cetera. So, this is up to the council to look at the existing ordinance wording and provide direction to staff on whether they want any amendments to the existing ordinance. And I think we have at least one speaker.
Yes, I have one speaker slip. I had a question, because as I recall, we allowed an RV, a boat, or a camper, and it was one of the three, not any combination.
That is correct.
And I've seen some, and I'm sure Barbara has seen some in her neighborhood in Thumbelina. Thumbelina probably is the biggest collection of property. The size of lots can better handle it than Rancho de Maria, some other communities, I was on Quail Run Road, very tiny parking area, so...
In a strong HOA such as Rancho de Maria, there's actually zero in Rancho de Maria stored this way.
And I think they have an area on their property that they could go to.
I believe they have.
I thought they had. So I think they've made arrangements to help with that.
So, if, you know, if it's in the back side yard, screened with the fence, out of the setback areas, that doesn't count, that's allowed. So they could have that plus one in the front setback area, but it's just one that's allowed in there, and we have code enforcement on at least one property that has multiple that we're trying to address right now.
So, if there's no other questions, we'll go to the speaker slip.
Just one quick one. The city of Solvang, the city of, other cities around us, what are their codes?
The city of Solvang is probably the most strictest. They have to be behind a fence and fully screened, they can't be out front. Lompoc, I, and I actually talked to the city administrator of Lompoc, they really don't have any regulations, so they're kind of haphazard at this time, and they're looking at it at this point. So it's, and it's across the board. The most strict is you don't have them in the front, you have to have them screened in your side or back yards with a fence. Putting in our code doesn't allow high fences in the front setback area, because you don't want walled-in, you know, properties. So putting a RV or trailer and trying to screen it in the front yard is just going to give you a big ugly fence in that area. So that kind of is, you know, wouldn't be an option. You'd still have, it's stored there, you'd still be able to see it.
Well, perhaps Barbara will have some more comment. I have speaker slip from Barbara, but I was also going to comment on the information she gave us at our last meeting, but I'll wait till you speak. Yours, yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council members. So I'm going to start out with the first set of pictures of the current recreational vehicles that are presently in someone's front yard, not, and thus, one picture is included in a so-called secure, special kind of gravel place for them to be, but it's literally in their front yard. So that, as our current ordinance allows, he is within the law, for our laws, to place his trailer in his front yard. The first picture you see is someone actually just put their boat in their front yard, so it is not under, it's not following any of our city ordinance codes. So I am here, also, Councilmember Sierra asked about what Solvang's restrictions are, and I just happen to have pictures.
You have a nice camera.
No, actually, that was in the original ordinance, it was one of the options presented to the city. So Solvang, that is their very strict recreational parking ordinance, and they do not allow a recreational vehicle to be in the driveway. Thus, we do not have that. So I guess I come to you to appeal and to ask you to possibly not have to upset everybody that already has a recreational vehicle in their driveway, as to change the ordinance wording to that you must have a vehicle not in your yard, front yard. So that still allows people to park their recreational vehicles in their driveway in their front yard. And unfortunately, I come to you because it is, of course, affecting me directly across the street and in my cul-de-sac, but I hope that as this ordinance states today, that could happen to you in your neighborhood, and I wouldn't want you to be as frustrated as I am presently. So I appeal to you to look at the wording of the ordinance and possibly really clarify where someone can park their recreational vehicle. Any questions, I guess, from the council, from me?
Barbara?
Yes, sir.
What's to the...
His house.
Yeah, but I know, this looks like it's on a hard surface.
He did put down the decomposed granite, and that is on the corner, so he did comply with our ordinance that there's not a visual problem as to come into the stop sign. And my other concern was that if it falls, if earthquake, I live very close to the dog park, so we have a lot of traffic and people and walking and dogs and children, that if that trailer falls, it would fall then on the sidewalk into the street. So I was appealing the first time on your danger side, but have since noticed that he's moved it in enough that it's now almost completely blocking his house, but he is complying with our regulations.
Does this go off out into the street? It looks like...
No, it does not. He's, it is completely right up against his house.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was in a different location, because it was closer to the fence.
It was, and I think somebody, yes, so they got the word that I was going after that and moved it a little closer to the middle of his house. But, so, thank you.
Barbara? I do not have any other speaker slips. Anyone wish to weigh in on this? Bring it back to the council.
I have a couple of comments.
All right.
So another one of those not easy problems, for sure. The comment that there is not sufficient commercial RV storage in the community is 100% true. There is almost none, it's non-existent. So that is a problem for homeowners, for sure, that have recreational vehicles or trailers. On the other hand, and maybe just where I've lived, but anywhere I've ever lived, has always been an ordinance that prohibits RV storage or trailer storage in front yards completely. Never, never had to deal with what Barbara's pointing out, because that really is unsightly. And fortunately for her, the RV is relatively new and in good condition, but I guarantee you that all 67 of those that are identified were not. And that's a real problem for homeowners. I mean, you're in your home, you purchased it, you have some expectations for your community, and I definitely understand the problem there.
And the answer would be?
Well, I mean, to me, I think we need to strengthen the restrictions.
Mr. McKeon, would we, are there some areas of, can communities adopt? The biggest problem I see with the motorhome, the fifth wheel, I'll call it, is that the whole area around it is severely unkempt, right out to the street.
Sorry, but that's a trailer, not a fifth wheel.
That's a trailer, all right. The trailer is in a very unsightly area. I don't know if we could have some sort of standards for just ground cover, if nothing else. We've got an orange cone in the front, between the sidewalk, and it's not a cone, but it's a piece of orange plastic which, that they use for highway blockage. It's just totally unsightly, so...
Well, Mr. Mayor, there could be a number of issues with regard to that property. I have not looked at it previously, but in my past experience prosecuting municipal code violations for various cities, I have gone after individual properties that have had deteriorating fences, deteriorating block walls, excessive weeds or dead vegetation. Those are separate apart, I think, from the parking issue. So I've seen cities approach it a variety of ways. Some cities require it to be only parked on paved areas, and then there are limits on how much of your front yard can be paved. So those are...
And we have that. Fifty percent, I think, we have.
So, within those parameters, cities can elect to allow them to be parked in the front on the paved areas only, provided that they don't over-pave the front yard, because we've had situations where we've, city staff, city code enforcement in other cities have sent out notices to property owners saying you can't park your RV or whatever trailer there might be on the grass, or you can't park your car on the grass, and the property owners responded by paving over the entire front yard. That's obviously not something you want to do. But I've seen a lot of different approaches. I've seen the cities that have them parked in the back, I've seen the cities that don't allow it, but it varies from community to community. But the issues that you raise regarding ground cover, landscaping, those are issues that can be addressed, and they might be independent violations, separate and apart from this code section.
I think it's aesthetic improvement to the community, but I, without a homeowners association, I think it usually falls on deaf ears, but I think if a city is able to put something in effect, or to me, it seems it would be something worth reviewing. We don't have a time certain for it, but it would be a great, I don't want to have an architectural review committee established just to do that, but I think we could put our heads together.
But we do have substandard landscaping wording in the public nuisance ordinance, so all of that's already covered, it's just not tied into RV parking.
Perhaps Barbara, you know, her neighbors could help, you know, make some recommendations and find out what legal ground we would have to ask people to do that, rather than... that, and find out what legal ground we would have to ask people to do that, rather than... Usually, it's peer pressure of your neighbors, if nothing else.
Yeah, I think she's talked to them, and they're not interested.
But if it's, if it's, if it's, if it's substandard and there's weeds, we do go after, we do code enforcement on items such as that. You know, if they just have, during the drought, an area with no weeds, it's just dirt, that's really, it's...
No, nothing you can do about that. But I, yes.
Go ahead.
No.
Finish yours.
My thought was that we leave it open to future discussion. There's nothing, we don't have a timetable to set. We just, it would be nice if someone came up with a proposal. We've, you know, I've had, I had a person that came, they've moved to the community from another community, and they had a definite opinion about the basketball hoops. And so it's just little things like that that might stimulate cooperation and enhancement overall for the irritation.
This is the, what, second time that this has come to us, and we keep postponing things. And it'd be really nice if we could decide as a group what we want to do and move forward. I kind of tend to agree with Ms. Connect that aesthetically, we have such a nice town. And when you drive around, this isn't, this isn't something you'd want to live next door to or across the street from. And it'd be really nice if we could, as a council, come up with something, whether it's saying you can park one item in your driveway and keep it covered, or whether we go to the extreme of solving and saying that it has to be in the backyard and covered as well. I don't know. But I think, I think with our ordinance that it's making, it's starting to make our town look really sloppy.
I agree.
I think I can call it. It sounds like from the observations you made by taking account of the number of RVs that are out there, you said that a majority of them are within compliance. And I'm gonna assume that they, you know, if you took a snapshot of all of them, that you say they're in compliance, that by and large, that they're also, you know, they're not set up so that they're, they put a pad out somewhere else, that they're probably in a driveway. And they're probably, they're probably conformed to some kind of aesthetic that neighbors aren't complaining. And that what I'm seeing here and what we're talking about is a minority, a minority of people. And, you know, my concern is that when you have a certain minority, and then if we, if we go ahead and change the codes, and now we're gonna put all these other people who have paid attention to the code in earnest, that now we're gonna start, we, you know, we could put everybody in the situation where it's gonna be expensive, they may have to get rid of their vehicles, where they didn't have to do this before because they were, they were meeting the obligations of the code. So I think you have to be real careful about looking at these, about not looking at situations one at a time, and putting everybody under one classification to clean up what is a problem of the majority, the minority of, let's call them violators. And I really don't wanna, I mean, it's really, sounds good that a majority of the people are observing the code.
Well, this is, these people are following the code.
Well, but, but I'm thinking, and you'd have to go back and take snapshots, I'm, what I said was, it sounds like a majority of those people, if I'm wrong, correct me, but it sounds like a majority of those people who are observing the code are having them in their driveway, and they're not, or they have a second driveway.
It's a wide variety. Some of them have expanded their driveway off into the side yard, some of them in the driveway. Some of them, that I noticed, have a really long, like a 40-foot driveway, and it's tucked way back, so you really don't see it from the street. Others are right, you know, right up front. So it's a wide variety of those types. And when I, go on, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, well, you know, out of your, you know, quick assessment, you know, what percentage do you think were like this? And I wish I saw the rest of it so I could really get a good idea of what I'm looking at.
I would say maybe 40, 40% are that, and the rest are maybe on the driveways.
That's pretty high, then.
Yeah. So they do, because they drive their cars to their garages and...
I know what you're saying. The only caveat to that is, so let's just say we say, okay, 67 people, most of them still, even now, most of them are okay. But what happens when, if we wait, and then there's 120 of them, or 150 of them, or 200 of them, and then there's 200 people that are complying that we have to deal with? Because now we have 200 RVs that are in people's front yards, taking up the entire community.
And from what Mark just said, it sounds, even though a majority of people are complying, there's still a big percentage that...
The other question is, how many of them look good? How many of them would you say look good?
That I didn't...
And that's what it comes down to, people concerned about their, you know, aesthetics and your property value. And so obviously, there's all that to consider. But I can't come up with a solution, or I can't think of anything.
Well, let me, if I may suggest, maybe I do some additional research and get wording from a variety of towns, from the whole range of what we currently allow, which is the way it is, to Solvang, where you have to completely screen and cover it, and see which ones are in between. And instead of, you know, bringing an actual ordinance back, give you the wording from the different ones I found, and then the council can maybe give me a little better direction on what they think is gonna be an acceptable route to go, whether it's stay the same or, you know, go the Solvang route.
You might check a couple HOAs. I bet they have the best wording.
Yeah. Does that, does that sound good?
Yes.
Different options, too.
Yeah, different options. Okay. And I don't think we need a vote or anything.
Just recall what went on when we did that last one. It was typically, Buellton had, I think, 10 feet between residences, how structures and their property lines. So it was easy for people to take down. And, but with the advent of the super-small lots, there's not even seven feet from house, from structure to property line. So, and that, and there was no concern about it. But I think that for future development is something we probably need to write into, into our plan approvals for people wanting, because if we don't spell it out, then it's kind of on us, if you allow them to move in. Recently, the Casetas up in some of the short, small cul-de-sacs, there are basically two families living in two structures, and not, almost every one of them have a recreational vehicle, like a boat or a camper, in addition to multiple cars. So it's, it's really, it's another, another ice storm, I guess you could say.
Really impacts aesthetics. I know when I drive through communities, and you have the communities that do not allow them in their front yards, they are just way more appealing communities than those that have RVs and boats in their front yards and driveways.
Okay. Well, we'll look forward to your recommendations or suggestions.
All right.
That brings us to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Carolyn is finishing up production of the budget, and we'll be sending it to the GFAO, GFAO?
GFOA. And it was sent yesterday.
Okay, it was sent yesterday for the award that we also received last year. The, we're continuing with meetings with property owners on the avenue. So I have a meeting scheduled next week with some of the property owners between Second and Demasa, plus the owners of 518. I'm gonna go up to Santa Maria and meet with Mr. Kusak, who's one of the partners in that, and chat with them on that. We did receive the gas station proposal on the top part of the avenue for the concept review, which I suggested to them to do, so they can go to the planning commission. And we actually came in this week, and we put it on for next week's planning commission meeting, so they can get a direction and input from the planning commission and decide whether they want to move forward on that.
Thank you, Mark.
Mm-hmm.
We do not have a, do you have anything you wish to add in this? We do not have a line item for you, but you want to...
No, everything's wonderful.
You live in a community without, pardon me. Thank you, Steve. With that, we will stand adjourned. And our next council meeting will be September the 8th, Thursday, at 6:00 PM in these facilities.
Wow.
Well, I gotta tell you, the 22nd is...
Well, you know, well, the thing is, is, I mean, you could lose, yeah, some of the folks who, but you gotta lose people on both sides of houses. Who knows? You know what I mean? If you voted down that...